Good morning and welcome to the October 26, 2022 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation followed by the pledge if you please stand with me. Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you for today. I thank you for the rain we needed it. Just thank you for everyone that's here. Thank you for this council. Just thank you for our first responders. Just ask that you keep them safe as they keep us safe. Just thank you for the city and all its citizens and just ask that the decisions that are made up here are pleasing to you. In your son's name, we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from September 28, 2022.
Move to approve this presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Nguyen. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down for two service awards. I don't believe Judy's here. Is she? No, there you are. Come back. Come on Judy. Court technician, 30 years of service. All right, let's see. Thank you Judy.
Thank you.
And the other one is Robert Hannah, commercial equipment operator, 25 years of service. Just from the council, you guys, thank you for your service to the city. I mean, you guys are appreciated. Us older people, not that you're one of them, but you're a mentor to these young people that are coming in and going to work. So we appreciate what you do.
It's a good place to work. Thank you, thank you very much. It's a good place to work. And whenever you look, the older you get and you get an offer, you can't pay the bills. This is a good place to work.
We did not pay Robert to say that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, the awards aren't over yet and I'd like to echo the sentiments just said, this is a great place to work. And so we have several achievements to celebrate this morning. And I'm going to start out with a couple of awards that the communications team has been recognized with this summer and this fall. The first award is for our 2020-2021 Call to Serve Annual Report. The theme of our 2020 Annual Report was Called to Serve. This phrase has long been a City of Tyler employee motto. For the City of Tyler, being called to serve means asking our community during life's worst moments, how can we help? And this report, I think more than any other we've done, really answers that question as we tell the story of our responses to really, I know we use this word a lot now, but unprecedented historical events. It's a testament to the Call to Serve spirit alive within our employees, everyone at this organization, and really everyone within our community. It's a community story. We are so proud of this publication and so we have taken home the Award for Excellence from TAMEO, the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers, for this report. And at this time, I would ask you to accept the following award.
Well, we did come down earlier and take pictures.
We did. And for everyone here, we have big groups, so we took our pictures early. The second award that we have to present to you from the communications team is the City-County Communications and Marketing Association Award of Excellence. 3CMA is a national organization. It's the, for those of you familiar with, it's with APA. It's like APA but for public communicators. And this year, there was, and again, I'm using the word, unprecedented number of applications to these awards. And we actually brought home the Award for Excellence for most innovative communications program for our city podcast, Roses and Weeds. I know that you are all listeners, but if not, you can listen wherever you get your podcasts. You can find us there. Just look for Roses and Weeds. But again, this was a tremendous honor and we work very, very competitive. And I think it was something like 4,000 entries over the spectrum of awards this year. And so again, we're a very proud, wonderful team and I'm happy to bring this one home. So at this time, I would like to request that the City Council accept both the TAMEO Award of Excellence for our 2020 Annual Report and our 3CMA Award of Excellence for Roses and Weeds.
Okay, we're going to accept them all at the end. I want you to just keep going about all these awards.
I'm going to keep going. Okay.
You don't have to tell them. It's already, the awards they already received, so.
Yeah. Okay, great. Then moving on, and I know we are all very excited about our Texas Municipal League Awards this year. We actually had, out of five categories, we were finalists in four. Again, Roses and Weeds was the communications finalist. We had our Tyler Arts Initiative where over the last year and a half, we installed with the help of the community, over 100 pieces of original art around town. And we had two very special programs, our Infants at Work and our Homeless Coordinator Program, which are new to the 2021 fiscal year. So our winners was first, our Infants at Work Program. And the Infants at Work Pilot Program is designed to support employees of working families with the transition of parenthood by allowing them to bring their infant children to work until they're six months old. The program seeks to improve work-life integration for City of Tyler employees by providing a positive work environment that recognizes a parent and caregiver's responsibility to both their job and their newborn. Notably, the program adds value and benefits for both employees at the city without adding additional costs. We've already had so many children in the program and so many grateful caregivers. This is one of, I think, our most recent additions. So this is baby Diego Verona. He's currently an employee at Main Street. But we couldn't be more proud of this really exceptional program within the City of Tyler. It really, this is, really says that this is a family-friendly place to work. And we are going to have another award recognition momentarily for this program. And last but not least, for TAML's, Texas Municipal League's Awards of Excellence, we have our, we won the 2022 Public Safety Award. In October 2021, the Tyler Police Department created a homeless coordinator position filled by a sworn officer whose sole duty was to work with Tyler's homeless population, identifying their individual barriers and needs, and helping them to access local resources. Johnny Green has been informally working in this area for years. He has done wonderful work in this community. And this was really the next step to solidify this program and make it something that other communities can look at and model. Johnny has made many individual success stories connecting people to resources, reuniting them with family, getting them into programs. He works with certain individuals daily until their needs are met. So he really acts as, it's more than enforcement, it's case management. And this is the type of community policing that is needed in these times. So since he has been working in this area, eight camps have been disbanded. And TPD has also successfully worked with the city code enforcement department to condemn porting structures that are hazardous to those unhoused and seeking shelters. So this really is a public safety program all the way around. So important and again, a model for what can be done across the state of Texas.
Keep on going. Let's go A4.
Okay, we're going. All right, and our final award, again, is for our Infants at Work Program. The organizational development team was recently recognized by the local nonprofit Champions for Children. Since 1996, Champions for Children, a 501(c)(3) has been motivating, a motivating force behind a coordinated community effort to design and implement progressive programs to help at-risk children, parents, and childcare providers. From professional teacher trainings to individual interventions for at-risk children of all ages, Champions provides caregivers, teachers, and families with the tools, training, and support they need to ensure that their children have every opportunity at success. Each year, Champions recognizes individuals and organizations that make a standout effort to support children, families, childcare centers, and teachers in East Texas. On October 20, the City of Tyler was recognized as the 2022 Champions for Children Corporate Champion for its effort in supporting employees with newborn children through the Infants at Work Program. Champions recognized the city's program as helping families bridge the gap that is often created when families have a newborn but do not have access to quality childcare when they need to return to work. So again, these are all wonderful awards and I can't say enough about the city departments that have come together to create these programs and make such a difference within and outside of the organization. Thank you.
Well, we accept all these awards.
Happily.
On behalf of the city. And I could talk at length about each program, but I'm not. But I'll say, Bob, thank you for Roses and Weeds and all the staff that participates. Johnny Green for the homeless program. He knows the homeless in our city by name and is very compassionate and we love Johnny. The Baby Work Program, Kate Deets is back there. She had her baby here for, has he graduated?
No, not yet.
Okay. Yesterday, I was at a meeting and Amber was there with her baby. And then she got up and spoke. She handed her baby to somebody else that was at the meeting. And to watch this occur is just, it's good for morale, it's good for, everybody's smiling. Everybody loves babies. So just on behalf of the council, thank you to staff and everybody that's done these awards. It makes us proud to be a part of this. So thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
This first item is a zone change request for the property at 817 West 29th Street. This is a zone change from two-family, R2 District, to NR Neighborhood Residential District. This is in District, Council District Number Three. The applicant is requesting the zone change to develop duplexes on this property. And the adjacent properties to the west, north, and east are all zoned for two-family residential district. They're generally developed with single-family homes. The properties to the south are zone R2 and R1B, also primarily developed with single-family homes and duplexes. This request would amend the future land use guide to single-family, medium to low density. The project is to develop duplexes on this property as a single lot. The NR District does allow for the development of medium-density housing on a single lot at a maximum density of 10 units per acre. So this would allow for some flexibility in facilitating an additional development in the north end. The, of the notices that were sent out to were returned in favor of the request. Zero were returned in opposition. And the plan that is only commissioned by a 6-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Cal?
So moved.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This next item is a planned commercial district or PCD site narrative amendment. This is for the Bellwood Park property on the West Loop. The applicant is requesting a change to the development standards that were approved in 2008. Just one minor change really is to remove the restriction of an automated car wash from the allowable uses or prohibited uses on the property. So when it was approved, there were some uses that were prohibited from being developed on the property. At the time, kind of the automated car wash, you know, technology, I guess, was kind of a little different than it is nowadays. And so with the, with some imminent development on the property, they are asking to allow for that use as well. The surrounding properties, as you can see, this is a large area uptown and so the, there's a mixture of uses in the area, mostly commercial uses and then undeveloped areas. The, when this was reviewed, it was recommended that the use be, or the automated car wash use be allowed but limited to more of that commercial area along the loop. And so the plan that is only commissioned by a 6-0 vote recommended approval of the amendment, limiting the use to any property that fronts along Loop 323.
Got one card here from Mark Priestner. If anyone has questions for Mark. Otherwise, anybody have any questions or comments for Cal?
Moved to approve, Z2.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This is a zone change request from PCD Planned Commercial District to RPO, Restricted Professional Office District. This is located along West Cumberland Road. This is actually a portion of a property, so this area has been subdivided into lots. And so this, what you see here in green is actually half of one of the lots. It's not updated yet on the map. And so there is a property, or this property that's in question here is essentially split zone and so it does have, you know, half PCD and half RPO. This request is to clean that up and rezone the entire property as RPO. The applicant is proposing to develop a dental office on the property and this would make that feasible to do. The adjacent properties are generally developed with commercial uses or intended to be developed that way. And then there's some single-family properties to the south. Of the notices that were sent out, zero were returned in favor or in opposition. And the plan that commissioned by a 6-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Cal?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z4.
This next request is also kind of a cleanup item. This is on Reeve Street, is rezoned, to rezone the property from multifamily to single-family. As you can see here, the property is too small for multifamily development and the applicant, and the area is generally developed with single-family homes. There are some warehouse uses or commercial uses in the area, but the applicant does plan to develop a single-family home on the property. And that would be consistent with the plan for the area. No notices were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. And the plan that commissioned by a 6-0 vote recommends approval to rezone this from multifamily to single-family.
Any questions for Cal?
Moved to approve, Z4.
Second.
Motion by Nguyen, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before you go to the next one, I want to call out one group of people. Second row there, we've got members from the SGA, Student Government Association, from UT Tyler. And we're glad you're here. We're going to start a mentor-mentee program again. We're going to meet after council and pair up. And this is our third year to do this, so we're glad you're here to watch government at work. And we're going through it so we can meet with you guys quick. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. This next item is a zone change request from RPO and C1 to PCD. That's from office and light commercial to PCD Planned Commercial District with a final site plan. This is along Shelley Drive. The applicant is proposing the change to allow for the existing building and a minor expansion to the building to, for use as a indoor self-storage facility. The adjacent properties to the northwest are zoned for, and developed as single-family use. To the north is office currently undeveloped. And then to the south and east are commercially used properties. The, this amendment, or this change would amend the future land use guide for that northern part of the property from single-family to general commercial, which imagine essentially was along Loop 323. This property does have access to Loop 323 via shared access drive on the east side of the property. It does go through south to the loop. It also has front edge and access to Shelley Drive on the north side. As you can see here, the applicant has prepared a site plan that shows the existing building, which is crosshatched there on the south side or the bottom part. And then the expansion, which is in white surrounding the property. So they are expanding to the north a little bit and then to the east as well, the footprint of the building. The, originally, the plan did show a larger expansion to the northwest, but it was identified that there are storm sewer lines in that area that the building had to kind of stay away from. And so, so you can see here, they are, they still have one access or one driveway from Shelley Drive in the same location that currently is. And they are showing the required buffer yard that's required on the northwest side adjacent to the single-family property. We did receive three notices in opposition from some of the neighbors to the northwest there, the total protest of just over 10%. The main concerns were the additional, or the expansion of the commercial use in the area, as well as concerns about property values and noise from the development. The PCD or the planned development does restrict the use to, or the existing use to indoor self-storage. And that generally has, from a commercial standpoint, has a lower, you know, traffic or, you know, traffic demand. And so additionally, with the access to the loop, some of that traffic's going to be dispersed that way as well, not generally through the neighborhood. The, the plan that is only commissioned by a 6-0 vote did recommend approval of the change to PCD to allow for the use.
All right, we have one card here from Brent Bradbury. If y'all have any questions for Brent.
I've got a couple of questions for Cal. Cal, looking through the notes on this item regarding those letters of opposition, nobody came and spoke publicly at the P&amp;Z meeting in opposition, did they?
So we had, we had two meetings on this, on this item. I believe the first meeting, we did have some, some neighbors did speak against the request, but I don't recall them returning to the next meeting.
Do you remember what their concerns were at the first meeting? Was it the buffer area?
I think it was generally, generally the expansion of the commercial activity on the property closer to their, to their property. And like I mentioned, so that has changed since that initial meeting. The site plan, the building did get pulled back to the, you know, away from their property because of the storm sewer line. So those kind of act as a buffer for that.
And I noticed in the notes that the letters in opposition mainly addressed traffic and property values. And you mentioned that the direct access to Loop 23 will alleviate some of those traffic concerns?
Yes.
Okay. And then have y'all had any instances where a development such as this has impacted property values?
We don't do those types of assessments. We wouldn't. Sure.
I mean, the example I can think of is the one that was done off of Grande and property values over there haven't been impacted negatively, have they? To your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, I don't have any cards, but I would give anybody out there the opportunity to speak for or against if you are one of those three people that are opposed. Nobody's getting up, okay? I'll entertain a motion.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Haney, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z6.
Yes, sir. This next request is a zone change from R1B, single-family, to R1D, single-family attached and detached district. The applicant's requesting this change to allow for the, to allow for an accessory dwelling unit, dwelling unit to be used on the property. As you can see here, the properties to the, the property to the east is developed with the church. And then to the other surrounding properties are single-family and generally developed with single-family homes. The future land use guide identifies the property as multifamily. This change would be more consistent with some of the surrounding properties as kind of a single-family, medium-density designation. So it would amend that to single-family, medium-high-density. The, as you can see on the property, there is, there is an accessory structure on the south side of the property that the applicant is wishing to utilize as a accessory dwelling unit. And there are, there is off-street parking on the property that could accommodate that. The, of the notices that were sent out, one was returned in favor, zero in opposition. And the plan that is only commissioned by a 6-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Cal?
Moved to approve, Z6.
Second.
Motion by Nguyen, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z7.
This is a similar case here to rezone from R1A to R1D on Lake Street. The applicant is requesting the change to bring the existing accessory dwelling unit into compliance with the ordinance. It's currently, this is on Lake Street. The surrounding properties are a mixture of duplexes and single-family homes. This is in the Midtown District. The amendment, or the zone change would amend the future land use guide to medium, single-family medium-high-density, similar to the, some of the other properties you see there on that block. Here's the property here. It does show there is an existing single-family home and then another structure that has been used for residential uses as well. And so this, R1D would allow for the, for that additional accessory unit to be used. Of the notices that were sent out, we didn't receive any in favor or in opposition to the request and the plan that commissioned by a 6-0 vote recommended approval.
All right, I've got a card here from Wilson Windburn. Do you wish to speak? Come on up, sir. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Morning, council members. My name's Wilson Windburn and I live at 5348 Old Jacksonville Highway in Tyler. I am in a current contract with Ms. Santoyo to purchase her house. And to make it through title, we have to have it rezoned and replatted. She's a tired landlord who's owned the house for quite a while and no longer has the energy to fix it up or to continue oversight and management of it. So to be able to move it further down the line, to be able to sell, we need to have it rezoned.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Windburn? Thank you. Any other questions for Cal?
Moved to approve, Z7.
Second.
Well, motion by Nguyen, second by Westbrook and McGee. It was a tie. Any further discussion? Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project. Z eight.
All right, this is a request for a, a voluntary annexation from the property owner. This is along, it's actually along Three Lakes Parkway, just west of, uh, of Three Lakes Middle School there. The applicant is requesting to annex their, their property in the adjacent right-of-way for Three Lakes Parkway into the city limits. The, this would expand the, the city limits, also expand council district number two. It would expand the ETJ to the west. And then also the, the original zoning would, is requested to be C one, which is consistent with the surrounding properties. The future land use guide would be established as mixed-use center, which is also an extension of the, the properties to the east and south. All, all the, all other departments have reviewed the application and anticipate no significant impact on the annexation request. The, uh, none of the surrounding properties, uh, returned a, a letter in opposition or in favor of the, the annexation. And so with that, the, the plan that is only commissioned by a six zero vote recommends approval of the annexation, which will establish the new, new city limit, uh, boundary. The, the new boundary, city boundary of city council district number two, the new boundary of the Tyler ETJ. And then also has established the future land use guide to reflect mixed-use center and the zoning, zoning of the property to reflect C one light commercial district.
We do have a card from Mark Priestner. So if anybody has any questions for Mark or for Kyle. A motion by McGee, second by Wynn. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z nine.
Right, this last item is also an annexation request. This is south across, Crosslake Boulevard, um, just in the, in the crossing area. This request is to annex approximately two point one three acres of land. It's really a continuation of the, uh, the development in that area. The, uh, this request would establish the original zoning of the properties, R one B, which is consistent with the properties to the north. And then also establish the future land use guide as a single-family, medium-low density, which is again, what we, we're seeing in that area. All other departments have reviewed the, the request and anticipate no significant impact on services and facility, uh, facilities by the, uh, annexation request. Of the notices, we didn't receive any in favor or in opposition. And the plan that is only commissioned by a six zero vote recommends approval of the annexation, annexation, which will establish the new city council boundary, or city limit boundary. The new boundary of city council district number two. Extend the, the Tyler ETJ and then also establish future land use guide as a single-family and zoning as R one B, a single-family as well.
All right, once again, we have a card from Mark Priestner. Mark, can you come up for a second? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Mark Priestner, eleven twenty-one East Southeast, Loop three twenty-three.
Great. No questions. I just wanted to, you were awful comfortable back there. You can go sit down. All right, any questions for Kyle?
I have a question for Mark.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. A motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kyle.
Mark, thank you for growing District Two.
Good morning, Kate. You know what the next question's going to be? If you're involved in the Bring Your Baby to Work program, you don't have your baby. So who has your baby?
Right now, my baby's at daycare. So she's not fully retired, but she's part-time.
She's retired on the job.
Yes, yes, exactly. She wasn't pulling her weight, I mean.
All right, M one.
All right, so the item before you, M one, is an engineering services contract with Half Associates for the twenty twenty-three water main improvements program. The objective of this program, um, is to replace two-inch water lines. We have over ten miles of, well, we still have over ten miles of two-inch galvanized steel water lines in the system that date back to the nineteen forties. And also to eliminate dead-end mains in the system. So in doing that, we're able to, uh, increase water quality or enhance water quality, increase pressure, and eliminate some of the flushing that we need to do if we can loop a dead-end main. So we look at the, um, frequency of work order, work orders in the area, uh, to see if we need to replace it in addition to, again, the size of the line and dead ends. We work in, um, pretty close coordination with the asphalt, asphalt, excuse me, the asphalt overlay program, um, in engineering to try to make sure that we're replacing the lines before they go through and do the asphalt overlay. So they don't come in, replace the, do the asphalt overlay, and then we have to go back through and, and cut into that newly laid asphalt. So I'm here to request that you authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Half Associates for the twenty twenty-three, uh, water main improvements project in the amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions for Kate? A motion by Haney, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kate. Chief Tyler.
Morning, Mayor Council. How are you today?
Good.
You know, for the last twenty-two plus years, we've been a contractual partner with TJC as part of the Tyler Junior College Police Academy. And we look forward to continuing that relationship with them. But occasionally, we go back and, and renegotiate our, our contractual agreements. One of the things we try, that we have to do is we provide them the access to the, to the gun range. We provide them access to a large training area that they can do driver training on. But we've also provided up to eighty, eighty-five percent instructors for the TJC Academy. Coming to you today, we're questioning the city council consent or authorizing a training agreement between the Tyler Police Department and Tyler Junior College Law Enforcement Academy. Difference in this one is we try to offset some of the costs to the city as we provide those, as they will move all of the continuing education classes and, and, and those to part-time jobs, as officers fill those on a voluntary basis. But the ones that we pre-schedule for the academy, they'll also pay remuneration back to the city at a cost of forty dollars per hour per instructor to offset those costs as we continue our contractual obligation with them, but also continue that partnership, provide, uh, high-quality law enforcement training to East Texas. So it's recommended the city council authorize the city manager to approve the training agreement between the Tyler Junior, the Tyler Police Department and Tyler Junior College.
Any questions for Chief Tyler? A motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Does anything need to be pulled or not? Motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We are down to the city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, a few items of note. We actually began our twenty twenty-two United Way Drive, um, here with our city employees. We raised nearly twenty-four thousand dollars, uh, last year from pledges from our city staff and are looking this year to match or beat that, uh, with this year's drive. So this goes, as for, y'all know, with the Tyler area, United Way, uh, the impact that it has on our community and different groups that our employees are quick to serve and to give towards that. And so we're very excited about kicking off, uh, this year's fundraiser for that. We just got through with Rose Festival, um, and had a great time of it. Council did a great job in the parade and being in different activities. Our, uh, police department, Parks Department were outstanding in handling the different traffic, the different activities that were going on. We had the Rose Festival Arts and Crafts Fair at Bergfield Park that had, uh, a record number of, uh, forest booths out there and vendors. And so we were very excited about how Rose Festival went and, uh, just what a great way that it portrayed our community. A couple of other things of note we have. It is an opportunity to go to the Texas Downtown Facebook page and vote for Tyler, for Downtown Tyler as the Downtown National Historic District, uh, are, is a finalist for the two thousand twenty-two final, for finalist as best economic game changer, uh, with the Texas Downtown Association. So, uh, it is one where you have the opportunity to go vote, uh, for different programs. So vote for ours. And, uh, this is kind of one to where kind of help make sure that Downtown Tyler continues to be, uh, on the map in regards to places to go here in Texas. Also with, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, we were able to do some, uh, striping and some changing of that one. I'm very excited about just how that came out with the bike lanes, uh, the kind of to be able to narrow the, down the lanes of traffic there, to be able to encourage as far as for the pedestrian and for the bicycle traffic as well. And then also the center turn lane that went in then. So, uh, our traffic department was able to put that together and we were very glad at how that went in. That's kind of one of those things that y'all discussed at your last meeting even for some of the traffic calming. And so you're able to see that in action. Mayor, you ask, you know, Hoover Dam, uh, you know, get this stuff moving. And so Cameron heard you, uh, and got it done. And then finally, a story I'd like to share from our police department, uh, about just outstanding services provided by Tyler Police Officer Chris Mackey. Officer Mackey was dispatched to a major traffic accident on Walton Road and Frankston Highway on September thirtieth. Officer Mackey was the first on scene and he quickly realized there were multiple persons with injuries involved. He triaged all the victims and started treating the most seriously injured, the driver. He saw she was in and out of consciousness and started having convulsions. Officer Mackey was able to pick her up out of the car, carry her out of the roadway, place her in recovery position, and held her spine until EMS got there. The lady was coughing up blood during the time and possibly had a lung injury. According to EMS, she would have probably have suffocated or possibly become seriously injured if she had not been provided immediate aid. Officer Mackey's professionalism and quick thinking in a high-stress situation was exemplary. Officer Mackey is accredited to the city of Tyler and Tyler Police Department and should be commended for his actions. And so just as, you know, we had a call to serve spirit and, uh, you know, Chris Mackey demonstrated that with the actions that he took on the scene to jump into that immediately. And so just wanted to share that, um, because as we always, the mayor was talking about earlier, uh, during the, kind of the Years of Service Awards, we have incredible employees doing incredible things. And so we're very grateful for them.
Well, very thankful for Officer Mackey. No doubt. Let's give him a hand. Uh, we are going to go into executive session. SGA folks, don't leave. We're not going to be gone long. Under Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero eight seven Economic Development Deliberation Regarding the Following. Possible offer or financial or other incentive to a, to a prospect and to consider financial and other information about that prospect, project which, with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations that could lead to a partnership in Tyler. So we're going to go back here for a little while, so stay tuned. Thank you.